Good evening. I'd like to call to order a regular meeting of the Board of Education of the Goshen Central School District, tonight, Monday, December 5th, 5:00 p.m. in the District Administration Building, and tonight's meeting is also livestreamed through YouTube. Next on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of meditation. If you could please keep in your thoughts the following: Roger Crott, he was a retired school bus driver; Josephine Predmore, a retired secretary at Goshen High School; Ashley Wade, a former Goshen graduate or student; Clive Booth, parent of current students of the school district; and Lisa Weas Nemec, a parent of recent graduates of our school.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its hands.
Next on the agenda is privilege of the floor. We currently do not have anyone signed up, so I will forego reading the policy and move on to the next on the agenda: the President's Report. I do not have anything to report for tonight. Next on the agenda is the Legislative Update. Tom Loftus. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Curtis Coats.
Thank you. I just wanted to share with the board an update on the progress on our current capital improvement project at Scotstown Avenue Elementary School. As you remember, there are two components to the project. First, the roofing component of the project. The roofing component of the project has been submitted to the State Education Department. It has cleared architectural review, did not require engineering review. It currently sits with fiscal advisor review. They go through the documentation of what budget items had been submitted. We are hopeful that that is going to clear soon. I spoke with Matt Milne now again this morning. He is going to check with them again this week, but advised if we do not hear back from State Ed, perhaps a phone call directly from the district would be warranted at the end of the week. So if I don't hear from him again, I'll go ahead and call our project manager at the end of the week, just to see if there's anything lacking that we can do to make sure that the roofing component clears. I shared with the board also an update from Lan Associates and from Gerard Associates on a meeting that we had this past week in relation to the electrical component of the HVAC upgrades. So Mr. Freeze, myself, Ms. Lamren were able to meet with Lan and Gerard on a question that came up regarding the transformer upgrade that would be required to power the new equipment that's going to be installed this summer at Scotstown. What we found out was they'd originally spec'd out a 1,000-kilovolt transformer to be placed on a new pad outside of Scotstown, which would have accommodated this upgrade and any other future upgrades that we might intend to do in terms of heating, in terms of cooling, in terms of any other electrical service changes. That transformer, Orange and Rockland, has said absolutely will not be available this summer. So what they're proposing in the interim is to put a 500-kilovolt transformer, which essentially is, I hate to simplify it to this, a plug-and-play, if you will. The current pad that is outside of Scotstown right now will accommodate that transformer. They will not replace any of the cabling that runs from the current transformer that goes underground into the building until they actually replace the new transformer, and they will wait to replace the switchgear where the line feeds in after they replace the transformer again. So essentially, it's going to be a double replacement. We're still within budget. If you look at the budget that I shared with you, Matt said, even all-in with forecasting for the additional change, we're only about 190,000 of the 250 that's been budgeted for that work. Again, we told them to proceed with option one of what I had shared with you in writing. In addition to that, they have shared the spec documents for the equipment. They feel far enough into the design that they have now shared it with Train. And again, just a reminder, we have signed up to go with the Omni bid cooperative to be able to buy that equipment. So Train currently has those documents. We're hoping before the holiday recess to hear back from them on what their cost estimates are going to be, and that will allow us to be able to start to plug in a lot of the numbers, to know exactly where we stand in terms of the budget. The one other piece that I just wanted to point out, we had one change that we made to the plan to accommodate for some of the condensing units that have to go on the roof. Matt had moved a portion of the cost from the HVAC component portion of the project to the roofing component. He's waiting to just make sure all those numbers come back from Train before he removes that. So we're showing about a $240,000 delta on the budget sheet right now. That will essentially be offset once we start to get those numbers from Train, hopefully, again, as I said before, we get into the holiday recess. So it's tracking where it needs to be. We're hopeful that they're going to finalize the planned documents to go to State Ed, if not right before the holiday recess in the beginning of January, and that will allow us to get into the queue for approval. State Ed has been very clear that for any projects that are related to ESER and/or gear, i.e. the federal monies, that they are looking to fast-track those documents. They have a separate portion of the crew in Albany that's working on those. Depending that we get ours in on time, which Lan and Gerard both feel like we will, then we will continue to move on track to be able to have the installation done for next summer. Happy to clarify anything, give any further updates, but I just wanted the board to be aware of where all that stood and to just back up that conversation with what I'd emailed out late last week.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Next on the agenda, we have the Assistant Superintendent for Business Report. Are you going to follow?
She's not here.
Do you have anything? No? Okay. Next on the agenda, the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum, Instruction, Personnel, and Technology Report, Mr. Jason Carter.
Thank you, Mrs. Salty. Good evening, everyone. Two quick updates for you this evening. Over the weekend, we had the 2022 Winter Nisma Concert Series. We're very fortunate to have Goshen High School senior Ben Thurtle perform with the mixed chorus. Ben had the opportunity to audition in the spring, in May, and found out that he was able to perform in August, so he's been waiting for quite some time to get to this performance. So we're very proud of him for his efforts, and we're very thankful to our music department, especially Mrs. Scully, for helping him to prepare. Also, we're about to kick off the winter concert series here in District with our first performance tomorrow at Scotstown Avenue Schools. This will run all the way through December 14th. One highlight I'd like to bring to your attention is the concert that we have at the Harness Racing Museum. That'll be held on the 8th at 7:00 p.m. So you can get your tickets, I believe, through the music department or at the door, and we look forward to seeing you there. And that is it for me this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Next on the agenda, we have the Consent Agenda. I need a motion. Shannon, Billy. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education accepts the retirement of Kathryn Brogan, teacher aide effective January 16th, 2023. Ms. Brogan has been with the district for 21 years. Be it further resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education accepts the retirement of Melissa Clark, teacher aide effective December 30th, 2022. Ms. Clark has been with the district for 16 years. Be it further resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education approves the remainder of the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor? Opposed? There's no old business. New business. I need a motion for minutes. Billy and Tom. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education approves the minutes for the November 21st, 2022, regular board meeting. All those in favor? Opposed? 11.2. I need a motion to approve the individual agreements for special education services. I have Billy and Brett. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education enters into individual agreements with the Fred S. Keller School, Green Chimneys, Center for Discovery, Inspire Kids, and Learning Together to provide special education services for students and for the district to sub-allocate IDEA 611 and 619 funds to said providers on a per-student basis for the school year July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023. All those in favor? Opposed? I need a motion for 11.3. Approve individual agreements for special education services, Cornwall Central School District Extended School Year Program. Tom, Shannon. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education enters into individual agreements with Cornwall Central School District to provide special education services to Goshen Central School District students during the 2022 Extended School Year Program on a per-student basis. All those in favor? Opposed? I need a motion for 11.4. Approve execution of consent order and judgment and tax tertiary refund, Carl Mack Associates. Shannon, Tom. Be it resolved that the Board of Education authorizes its attorneys, Shaw, Perelson, May, and Lambert, LLP, to execute consent order and judgment in a tax tertiary proceeding. Caption Carl Mack Associates LLC versus Town of Waukele and Goshen Central School District. Be it further resolved that the Board authorizes the refund of taxes as required by the terms of the consent order and judgment. Be it further resolved that in order to fund said tax tertiary judgment refund, budgetary appropriations for the 2022-2023 school year shall be increased, A1964.400, and that the tax tertiary judgment refund amount to be transferred to the general fund budget from the tax tertiary reserve as the offsetting source of revenue. All those in favor? Opposed? I need a motion to approve budgetary transfers. I have Shannon and Brett. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education approves the budgetary transfers over $25,000 for the month of October 2022 due to realignment of BOSI's account codes as presented. All those in favor? Opposed? I need a motion for 11.6. Approve overnight trip for the wrestling team to a tournament in Cooperstown. I have Billy and Shannon. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education approves the overnight trip for the wrestling teams to attend the Cooperstown Wrestling Tournament in Cooperstown, New York from December 29th through the 30th, 2022. Be it further resolved that the Board reserves the right to cancel or reschedule any school-sponsored trip or activity in the event of any emergency condition outside of the control of the school district in its sole discretion. All those in favor? Opposed? I need a motion to accept a donation from Campus Multimedia. I have Billy and Tom. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education accepts a donation of $250 from Campus Multimedia for the district's participation in the U.S. Army program to be used at the district's discretion. All those in favor? Opposed? I need a motion for 11.8. Approval of Terms and Conditions for Evening High School. Tom and Shannon. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education approves the Terms and Conditions for Evening High School of the Goshen Central School District effective July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023. All those in favor? Opposed? Next on the agenda, I need a motion for the Board to enter into applicant interviews. I have Billy and Tom. Before we begin, I just wanted to mention exactly what we will be doing for the next probably four hours. As everyone knows, the Goshen Board of Education has a vacancy, and tonight, all those candidates who have submitted applications and information have been invited back to present to the Board. We do have eight individuals coming in this evening that have been scheduled. We will take a break at some point in the evening as well. All the candidates have met all the qualifications for the Board member opening. I'm not going to go through, you know, what those qualifications were, but the term of the service will be from the date of appointment until May 16th, 2023. Basically, what folks can expect with the format is, we did provide all the candidates with the questions ahead of time. I will be asking those questions. There are three questions. After we ask the individuals to simply state who they are and, you know, whether they are a parent or a community member or a business owner. And then after the interviews are conducted, the Board will go into executive session and deliberate, and then hopefully, we will have an answer for everyone to report at the next board meeting. Anyone have any questions on the Board? We've also talked about the fact that we will try to hold all of our questions, the Board member questions, off until all three questions have been answered, and we have given everyone approximately 20 minutes, but we'll see how it goes. We do have just a couple of minutes. If you want to just break for five minutes before we start the interviews, they will be starting at 5:30. They will be starting at five-thirty. Next on the agenda, I need a motion for the Board to enter into applicant interviews.
Thank you. I'll go right to the first question. What are some of the major issues you believe our school district is facing?
Sure. I just wanted to say that I think that Goshen's a wonderful school district. And it's filled with a lot of professionals and wonderful administrators and teachers and students. And I think it's important to start with the positive. It's just how it was professionally and personally. So, you know, that being said, you know, I'm very grateful to live in this community in such a wonderful school district. So the first question, the major issues that the school faces? First and foremost, promoting policies that ensure the safety and well-being of every student is of the utmost importance. It's imperative as a district to stay updated with the health department and inform the community with great consistency and transparency regarding any health or safety tips and concerns. For example, currently we are challenged with keeping the students safe with protocols and policy that keep them from harm, while repeated hold-and-place drills have produced some apathy among some of the students. Part of this issue includes a lack of transparency and follow-up from the district with consistency in a timely manner. In addition, there is a need to retain excellent leadership in Goshen. There have been at least six principals in the past eight years at the high school alone. We need to look at what is being done as a district to hire and retain excellent leaders. There's a need to adopt policies that support mental health for students, faculty, and staff. There's a need to adopt and support policies to educate our students on the dangers of drug use, from the youngest of our students to the oldest. This cannot be emphasized enough, as there is a drug epidemic going on in our country. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention the ball has been dropped and our children are suffering and dying as a result. We need to adopt policies where communication is being put out in a timely manner, followed up to help the community feel at ease while protecting confidential information. The lack of concise communication breeds distrust. You can see why I started with the positive. Currently, we are facing a gap in educational achievement for a variety of reasons, including the loss of instructional time from the pandemic. Unfortunately, not all students were able to continue their academic success during and after our country's continued crisis, and are in need of additional academic, social, and emotional care. In addition, we are trying to bridge the gap, the achievement gap, between the four buildings at the elementary, intermediate, middle, and high school levels by supporting the superintendent and the policies that would bridge those gaps. We are continually challenged with a need to update, adapt, recognize policies that will be helpful for all students in a world that is in constant change, with demands that are also in constant change. We are faced with having to approve a fiscally sound budget during an economically challenging time, without losing excellent programs that benefit all the students. Board members are faced with a need to stay connected to the community, listen to their concerns, without taking those concerns personally. For example, you're in charge of hiring and evaluating the superintendent of schools. If there was concrete evidence that the superintendent was not acting with integrity and accountability, you would be faced with the challenge of admitting to the possibility that you may have made a mistake. As we can all agree that integrity is something you either have or you do not have. Meaning, when a person is alone in their office without the board present, they are still holding true to their word and conducting themselves in a manner that doesn't pass blame on others, and also conducts themselves in a manner that would not be considered an embarrassment to the district or the community. When you accept an elected position such as this, a board member, you are faced with the challenge of having to evaluate and hire the superintendent of schools. That means accepting and analyzing data and evidence, both good and bad, objectively to the best of your ability, without inserting your own benefit either way. In addition, on a separate note, it's very important that we work and hire and retain leaders who are willing to make those very uncomfortable but necessary phone calls to the bully's parents. So that we work together to raise students who become the best people they are capable of becoming. The call helps to promote the safety and well-being of the bully's victim. And gives a bully a greater opportunity to change for the better, making school life more enjoyable for all. It is necessary for us to work as a community and give the parents a chance to support their child's continued growth, and that cannot be accomplished without the correct leadership. Supporting those extremely necessary types of calls needs to be worked on from the superintendent down. In addition, it's important to let the parent address their concerns with the correct administrator. That also needs to be supported from the superintendent down. As a district, it's important to have faith and respect for our leaders. Micromanaging our building leaders from the top down is not using our hired resources to the best of their ability, and it's not an effective way to communicate or to retain excellent leadership. Board members are faced with a need to vote on issues that may not be agreed upon by all, yet as board members, it's important to be able to move forward as a unit for the greater good of the district, as well as the greater good of the community. It's important to help the need, this is the last part of that first question, which is last but not least, it's important to help the neediest members of our community so that all children feel supported to the best of our ability.
Thank you. Next question, what in your experience or background would you consider to be an asset in the role of a board member?
This might be a little more positive, we'll see. I have almost thirty years of experience as an educator and administrator at the elementary, intermediate, middle, and high school levels, where I served as a teacher, an assistant principal, a principal, and director. I have worked with numerous professional learning communities to help promote student achievement, safety, as well as promote their social, emotional well-being. Through MTSS, multi-tiered systems of supports, I also helped improve behavioral concerns, working with talented counselors and staff as part of a committee. I spent almost thirty years collaborating with all stakeholders to promote student achievement, decrease referrals, increase attendance, motivate all types of learners, encourage excellent moral character, model respectful behavior, and ensure the social, emotional well-being and safety of all students. In addition, while teaching in the public school system, I also taught how to increase productivity in the workforce through Mount St. Mary's College at West Point Campus as an adjunct professor. I am very familiar with New York State policies in education, law, DASSA, MTSS. That being said, my ability to hold and maintain accountability across all levels, including at the district levels, is embedded in my education as well as in my experience, and I share the board's vision. I am also passionate about providing the students with the best education possible in the safest environment, where their dignity is intact and they graduate as thriving lifelong learners with a sense of civic responsibility. I like to think that I am sitting here today because as a student, I too had a board, a caring board, and was able to graduate myself with a sense of civic duty. In a world where we're facing tough financial times, my education, experience, and expertise includes fiscal responsibilities, where I've been in charge of budgets, grants, analyzing programs to meet the needs of all students, as well as the needs of the district, without adversely affecting student performance, programs, growth, or safety. In addition, I attended and ran monthly budget meetings to ensure we maintained fiscally sound budgets, and I made changes when necessary. In addition to being a teacher and an administrator, I was the lead grant writer for the first universal pre-K program in the Hudson Valley. And I went on to write the grants for students who needed additional support to graduate from high school. These grants were worth millions of dollars, helped many teachers keep their jobs, and proactively helped underrepresented students get a head start on their education, and others earn a much-needed high school diploma. This work positively affected outcomes for many students, and is that type of collaborative, hard work, attention to detail, and care that I would like to bring to you as a member of the Goshen Board of Education. As a member of this community for over two decades, I am invested in the community and have many neighbors, friends, acquaintances, who have children who went through Goshen School District and are currently going through Goshen School District. In addition to be very connected to this community, I am very approachable and a good listener. I have been a parent now for almost thirty years, and I've been an educator and administrator in the public school system for almost thirty years. I have studied student education law, discipline, academics, and have chaired many meetings on health and safety. Response to intervention, MTSS, multi-tiered systems of support, I have filled the roles of attendance chair, pandemic health and safety chair, honors chair, special education, head of discipline, 504 chair, head of fire drills and safety, and I was certified as lead evaluator for teacher observations under the thoughtful classroom, as well as the Charlotte Danielson framework. I have written and adopted curriculum over the years and spent many hours on interview committees looking for the best candidates, followed by many years of evaluating, supporting, and retaining excellent candidates. In my role as an administrator, I have helped reduce referrals, increase graduation rates, and improve health and safety protocols by analyzing data, designing surveys for all stakeholders, sending positive letters home, running meetings, and actively participating as a member of professional learning communities. I worked with district lawyers on discipline, referrals, and I filled the role as DASSA coordinator. As a teacher, I was an elected union official and helped resolve conflict within my building as building representative. As an educator, data showed I improved reading and math scores across all subgroups consistently year after year. I am well-informed on policies, and I can say with confidence that my expertise can directly improve accountability and integrity within the district and at the district level. I have profound respect and admiration for the teaching profession and all the work that goes into being a good teacher. For each and every teacher listening right now, as a taxpayer and as a former teacher myself, I salute and applaud you, and I thank you for all that you do each and every day for each one of our students. You are appreciated, and all of your hard work is gone unnoticed. Thank you again. Our goal is to support all students, and without your hard work and dedication day in and day out, that goal cannot and would not be accomplished. I consider myself, my knowledge of these facts, my greatest asset, and I like to give all the teachers a shout-out. On a very less interesting note, part of my education includes district-level classes and law classes. I am certified at the district level to become superintendent of schools, and as my education background expertise matches this job requirement as a board member, I believe I am the best candidate for this opening. I have planned to run for a seat on the board for many years, and this is the first time I have had the opportunity and the time to do so. I want to run for an elected position in the spring this year, and I'm happy this opening is going to give me a platform and also a chance to be on the board and gain experience before I run for the elected position in the springtime. Sorry, that was long-winded, but I have a lot of experience that matches this particular position. So I wasn't sure what the competition was, so I tried to include everything.
What do you believe is the role of a school board member?
Sure. The board is accountable to the community, the public, the students, the state government, and even to the courts. The board helps build the ideal student experience by adopting policy that meet the needs of all students, including but not limited to equitable access and opportunity for all students, keys to build success for each student unique to their situation, protects and promotes social, emotional, and academic growth and well-being for all students, encourages civic leadership to enhance morality and excellent character traits, so that each building has equal opportunity to promote successful, well-adjusted, lifelong learners who pursue their passion and grow their talents fearlessly with great confidence. The role of a board member is to improve and maintain excellent safe transportation, health, and safety for all students. They seek to improve graduation rates, decrease achievement gap among all students, including ELO, students with disabilities, economically disadvantaged, and all students. The role of a board member makes families aware of opportunities within the school district. Fiscal responsibility adopts a budget, sets and approves district's budgets. The role of the board is to be prepared to attend meetings well-versed, meaning read up and listen to concerns from within the community and school community, so that the members of the board have equal opportunities to be prepared for meetings and then vote based on informed decisions. The role of the board has a willingness to share their expertise and listen to others to make informed decisions, as well as a desire to work collaboratively as a team, even if matters are not voted on all the same, all the time. A board member maintains the desire to work collaboratively as a team, even if not everyone always agrees. A board member recognizes the need to be an excellent listener, as well as an excellent collaborator. The role of board member respects a shared vision for the district that benefits all the students now and in the future. The role of the board member promotes the district in a positive light, while addressing the negative to the best of their ability. The board member sets goals, values and mirrors the community, and sets high expectation accountability for all. They analyze data across grades, attendance, referrals, academics, as well as state and local assessments, so that their policies match the needs of the district. The role of the board adopts and reviews curriculum, develops and adopts policy consistent with state and federal law, hires and evaluates a superintendent of schools, develops and adopts policies that ensure district administrators are supporting the building leadership, teaching staff, and student programs, maintains a connection with the community, approachable, good listener, willing to analyze information, both good and bad, objectively, without personal interest or benefit, recognizes the need to analyze leadership performance, and the fact that leadership performance changes, and that change is ongoing throughout the year. The board is expected to hold the leaders accountable. Adopt policies that promote student attendance and student voice, recognizes the need to protect students from the drug epidemic our country and schools face by working collaboratively with all stakeholders, including the local police department and social services, along with proactively providing programs that educate all students about the dangers of drug use. Meaning, the board supports programs working with the ADAC to eliminate drugs in every building, and again, proactively offer programs to educate our students about the dangers of drugs, including at the K through two level. The role of the board seeks community input by actively reaching out to them, and seeks to work collaboratively on surveys, making sure surveys are available to community members, students, and all stakeholders. Feedback and data help drive next steps and policies. The role of the board supports and recognizes the need for online safety and shares resources with parents and all stakeholders. The role of the board demonstrates through policy and the need to graduate students with digital literacy across multiple platforms, prepared to face a global economy with increased competition. The role of the board adopts policies that promote unity and accountability within the district. The role of the board sees an increasing need for more entrepreneurs and students ready to think outside of the box, using well-developed creative skills from their hard work in student-centered classrooms. The role of the board attends athletic events, concerts, and other student-centered events to show support and visibility to the public. The role of the board shows integrity and confidentiality while supporting student needs and programs within the community and within the district. And finally, the role of the board volunteers their time, not only to attend events, but to join committees to work collaboratively for the greater good of the district. That was long.
Thank you.
Probably used up all my time.
Any questions?
I had a lot to say, I'm sorry. I feel like we didn't really get to have our little conversations, but it's, thank you for listening to me, and good luck, and I hope to see you all. Take care. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Good evening. Do have a couple of minutes, so if you want to go? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Good evening again.
Hi, John.
If you could please introduce yourself and briefly describe your current role, whether you're a parent, community member, or business owner within the Goshen School District, and then we'll start with the questions.
Sure. So I'm John Sullivan. I'm all of the above. I'm a parent, community member, and local business owner. So I guess I check all three boxes there. Lifelong resident, been here since, well, shouldn't say lifelong, I've been here since the second grade. So some form of years before Goshen. Yeah, I grew up here, chose to raise a family here. Proud member of the community. I'm the president of Goshen Youth Football. I'm actively involved in most of the sports programs in this town, for better or for worse. So yeah, I'm excited at the opportunity. I've been here my whole life. I've gotten a lot from this town and this school district, and I'd love the opportunity to give back to it.
The first question is, what are some of the major issues you believe our school district is facing?
Sure. So I think some of the biggest issues, not just our school district, but really every school district is facing are the problems with drugs in the schools. It's definitely a major one. I mean, we're seeing it more and more. Not to get overly political, but legalization of marijuana has made so many more things abundant, and I think we're seeing that more and more where kids are experimenting. And even I see this year, like, a lot during the school day, you know, with things they don't understand. And I think that one of the biggest priorities is really education, right? Is to help these kids understand, you know, we had dare and all of those things growing up and really, I think we can all probably say, those education pieces of it, we're always kind of behind the times. And I think it's our job to really make sure that these trainings and these educations are modern and that it's speaking to what kids are facing. The second biggest thing I think we're facing as a community, as a country, is school safety. More and more every day, it feels like you turn on the news and you see something tragic happening in a school. So one of the things that's very important to me is being ahead of the curve on that. I'd love to be known as the school who has too many rules rather than the school who left the back door open or something like that. So, you know, it's always prepare for the worst and hope for the best, you know? So those are probably the two biggest issues, I think, that face us as a community.
Next question. What in your experience or background would you consider to be an asset in the role of a board member?
Yeah, so really, I think I have a fun relation to this in being a Goshen student. I've built an entire career and a fairly successful business off the backbone of my education from this district, and I'm really proud of that. I think that my profession, I'm the chief operating officer and a partner in a payroll and human resources company. I think that lends a lot to probably some of the problems that come across this board in regards to hiring, employee retention, recruitment. I'm also very active in acquisitions and negotiate contracts weekly, to be honest, which I know is part of the responsibilities of the board. So I think that my career really lends, maybe in a different vein than most in this arena. I also think that my role as the president of Goshen Youth Football, while pales in comparison to being a school board member, kind of pulls on the same threads. I deal with the community all the time. I deal with, you know, problem resolution all the time in it. Granted, I would assume on a smaller scope, but I think that, you know, working as a leader in a community-based organization really lends itself to what gets done here.
Thank you. The last question. What do you believe is the role of a school board member?
So I think the number-one role of a school board member is to create a safe, functional environment for our kids to learn and really to do so as a reflection of the community that elects us. In this case, I understand. I'll be elected, I'll be chosen, but I think in the same, you know, much of the same idea. It's our jobs to deliver on what the community wants while maintaining that safe and proactive education experience for our kids.
Anyone have any questions?
Let's start that again. I did have a follow-up question. I would have asked the other two candidates who were here that I planned on asking everybody, but they actually had covered the point themselves in their response to the questions. What intention do you have, if any, to run for a seat on the board come the spring when there is the available seat?
So it was my intention before this space became available to run for the board in the spring. I would love to say that I, you know, would get a ton accomplished in the, you know, ultimately four or five months that this term represents, but realistically, I would like to be part of this board for a long time. I have a child in the sixth grade. I've been here, like I said, forever. I don't plan on going anywhere anytime soon, and I really, this is the best way I could see fit to give back to a community that I've received so much from.
Any other questions? Great. Very nice meeting you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you guys giving me the time.
Good evening once again. If you could please introduce yourself and briefly describe your current role, whether you're a parent, community member, or a business owner within the Goshen School District.
Excellent. Good evening, everybody. My name is Jacob Gardner. I am a parent in the district. I have two beautiful young ladies who attend Goshen Intermediate School, my daughter Aubrey and my daughter Zoe. I've been a parent in the district for several years now. Zoe, or Aubrey's eleven, so we've been here for a while. My wife and I moved into this district back in 2009. Took some time, moved out, and then decided to come back in after having kids because we really, truly believed in what the schools were doing here in Goshen. So we saw them as a prime district within the county, and I hope to be a valuable member moving forward for this community.
Thank you. First question. What are some of the major issues you believe our school district is facing?
The biggest issue is coming back from that unprecedented COVID time. You know, we're still feeling it in education. You know, our students are still figuring out how to come back into the fold. Our teachers are still figuring out how to come back into the fold. And we're still trying to figure out and identify the needs of our kids from COVID. You know, it's unprecedented what we all went through. And just because we're all back, we don't necessarily see a mask or anything like that, we can't forget that there was a major block of time that was taken from our kids, taken from our teachers, taken from our administrators. And how then do we return from such an unprecedented time? I see that as the number-one factor for our kids right now. I feel that Goshen is certainly capable, well-positioned to be a leader moving forward for this unprecedented time. We just need proper guidance. You know, we need to come up with some good policies. We need to have motivated leaders that can certainly help us move forward for our kids, for our community. That is certainly number one. It's helping our kids move forward. How do we build upon our awesome foundation that we already have in Goshen? You know, we have supported community members, community groups. We have supportive faculty and administrators. We have a community that is certainly willing to support us. And how do we, you know, protect the interests of our students and protect the interests of the community at the same time as we come back from this unprecedented time we all just went through?
Thank you. Next question. What in your experience or background would you consider to be an asset in your role as a board member?
Sure. I'm a lifelong educator. I've been a teacher of the performing arts since I was in New York performing down there. That's how I got into education, working through summer programs, dealing with adolescents who really wanted to explore the arts. And that ultimately got me into my role where I am today as a high school educator. I've been through special education programs. That's ultimately how a midstep that I took in order to get into the position I am. I was a teaching assistant for several years. It's ultimately where I met my wife, who was a special education teacher for 13 years. You know, my master's degree is in curriculum. You know, I have been a student-centered community member my most, my entire adult life. So I think that uniquely positions me to help Goshen move forward from this unprecedented time we had just faced. I understand curriculum. I understand leadership with regards to school districts. I understand what the teachers are facing day in and day out in their classrooms. I, you know, as a parent, can understand where my kids are, you know, and where they see every day and their needs every day. You know, I check a lot of boxes for a school district that would need a leader, someone to help lead their district into hopefully many, many more years.
Next question and last question. What do you believe is the role of a school board member?
Sure, no problem. The role of a school board member is to help guide policy, to identify ultimately where is this district going, right? How can we help our district leadership identify that policy? Eventually, obviously, policy directly linked to program. You know, listening first. First, you know, seek to understand, then be understood, you know, is an important role of a board member. Certainly, I come at this position with, through my lens, through my understanding. But as a board member, you need to represent a lot more people than just yourselves, right? And so although I do bring a lot of tools within my toolbox to help Goshen move forward, I need to also, as a board member, understand where everybody else is coming from. What other tools do other community members present? And what do they bring? And how then can I be the voice for them as well? That is ultimately my role is to help the district move forward with policy, certainly understand budget, understand, you know, the roles of our district within the community, and how can we continue to grow and with this community together?
Thank you. Any questions?
Always have a question. First time around, everyone looked like, have one? What intention do you have, if any, to run for the open seat in the spring?
Yeah, I mean, yeah. I'm absolutely intended at opening, running for the open seat in the spring, you know? I think that the next several months are going to be a time period to listen and learn and understand what does this community need? You know, what does, what does the, both outside the district and inside the district? You know, understand the board, understand the key players administratively as well as with regards to the faculty and staff as well, and then be able to then position myself within the community and ultimately let the community decide whether or not they would like me to continue as a board member.
Any other questions? Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, good evening. If you could state your name and then your role in the community, whether you're a community member, a parent, business owner, and then we'll go through the questions.
My name is Scott Selbo. I'm a parent of the community and a physician of the community.
First question, what are some of the major issues you believe our school district is facing?
So I think our school district is facing several issues. Education is the first, but under that role of education, there are several things that are affecting that, and those are safety issues, safety issues such as substance abuse, such as bullying, such as threats of violence. These things are all affecting the amount of education that our children are getting. They're affecting the amount of education in school when the classrooms are locked down and they're missing out on time. It's affecting their times at home. I have to imagine this is affecting their mental health, which is a huge issue. I don't understand or see how these kids can spend time focusing or prioritizing whether or not to study for that math test or science test when they've just been evacuated from a class event or a dance, when they just had dogs going through the classrooms looking for bombs or drugs, when they just may have seen a friend or a fellow student in the hallways, maybe from a drug overdose, when they hear those sirens coming from the ambulance, see the lights coming, what must be going through their minds? And I think these are huge issues and things that, you know, we never had to deal with, but I think that's affecting them. Our kids most recently have gone through a time of COVID, a time where they were socially distanced, a time where they were challenging learning from home. Now we finally get them back into the classrooms and spending time with their friends, and they have to go through these things and worry about airdrop threats. I think it's a tough time for our kids, and I think those are some of the big issues. Along those same lines, I think communication and transparency is an issue. I think community, especially parents, need to find these events out in real time. They shouldn't be finding out from friends, from colleagues, from coworkers, from Facebook groups. They should be hearing it directly from the school. I think in the past, that may not have always happened, but I think these are things that we need to work on.
Next question, what in your experience or background would you consider to be an asset in the role of a board member?
So I think there's many things about me that might set me aside or provide me or you guys with a good asset for being a board member. I think first we have to start from introducing myself and giving the background. I'm someone who cares. I'm someone who steps up, someone who volunteers, someone who aids the community whenever I can. My family moved to Goshen in 2015 and mainly moved here because of a better education and a better life for our kids. Since moving here, I wanted to help out wherever I can. I've been involved with the Goshen Little League, coaching year after year, everywhere from T-ball up to the major league divisions, and still I'm a part of that. Volunteered my time in classrooms at different grades, giving medical-related topics, speeches for our youngsters, and also for the Cub Scouts. I care about the community in general. When just a few months ago, I was traveling to CVS and I saw a Goshen police officer helping a man who was down on the ground with a woman who was hysterical above him. I stopped, helped block traffic to keep them safe, and went out and ascertained the situation. I helped the man with his medical condition, his emergency at the time, and kept him stable until the ambulance arrived. So that's kind of my general background. As far as my profession, I'm a board-certified internal medicine physician at Crystal Run Healthcare for over 18 years now. A few short years after joining, back in 2004, I became a partner. About a year later, I became a division leader. A division leader at Crystal Run means that I supervise all the primary care that happens in our Rock Hill location where I work. That's supervising about a dozen primary care providers, both family practice and internal medicine physicians, as well as nurse practitioners. It means I meet with them quarterly. I review budgets. I'm involved in hiring, interview processes, unfortunately sometimes termination processes. I go over their quality of care. I go over notes. I critique them. It's not always an easy thing to judge a fellow physician and tell them that they might need to step it up or do something different in a field where everybody believes they're doing everything right all the time. Being a division leader there, we take classes, seminars, and trainings on how to become a better, more effective leader, things in skills of communication, listening, empowering others, being fair, ethics. These are all things that we deal with on a daily basis. Also being a division leader, I'm also part of what's called the Best Practice Council, where I collaborate with division leaders across many specialties to make sure that we're bringing the paramount and up-to-date treatment for our patients in our community, what's considered the gold standard of care. Being a physician means you have to think analytically. You have to review original works of art and original studies, look at the validity of those studies, understand the results, apply those decisions to our patient population, and treat them accordingly. Every day, we have to make tough decisions. Sometimes they're planned decisions. Sometimes after talking to the patient, we realize that in a collaborative effort, they might not want what's best for them. They might not want the things that we stress or urge them to do. So we have to change. We have to think on our feet, and we have to improvise. We have to make people understand the risks and the benefits of their decisions. We have to act as educators, also a student continually to learn even after all this We have to collaborate with both patients and members of other specialties, again, to bring care. I think being in such a dual role, being both a medical provider and also an administrator of a large company, gives me several great tools to be a leader and an effective board member.
Thank you. Last question, what do you believe is the role of a school board member?
So I think the role of a school board member is foremost education. We need to ensure students have the best education possible that our budget will allow. We need to keep up with changing times and changing technologies. We need to budget for these new technologies. We need to make sure that our kids today have the superior tools to allow them to follow their dreams and put them in the best college or the best place in life that they want to be. Children have to be the number one concern, and our education has to be that concern for our children. It is with this being said that we need to make policies, we need to set coals, we need to review and set curriculums that allow this to happen. We need to hire administration, we need to hire superintendents who follow this belief. We need to listen to our community. We need to listen to the parents. I think we need to make ourselves accessible and listen to them. I think there's a lot of good ideas out there, and they probably are not going to come from one person individually, but we need to take ideas from everywhere and every person that we can and put them together, and again, make some tough decisions and make things the best for our kids, the other ones that come first. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
What intention do you have, if any, for running in the board in the spring when there's an open seat available?
That's a great question. I'm absolutely looking to run in the board. You know, I hope after tonight, I'm elected as an ex-board of education member and absolutely going to run. If I wasn't in this wholeheartedly, I wouldn't be here, wouldn't be here in front of you now. Running for the board in the past, it's not something that I probably thought about, but in light of recent events and knowing that they had an opening, I thought that this was my calling and to come out and help, and that's why I'm here. And yes, I intend to go forward in the future as well.
Any other questions? Thank you so much for coming this evening.
Thank you.
Have a good night. See you.
If you could just start by introducing yourself briefly and describe your current role, parent, community member, or business owner within the Goshen School District, and then we'll start with the three questions.
All right, and, oh, we're good to go. Perfect. So my name's Shawn Griffin. I'm a state trooper in the area. Currently, I'm on the New York State thruway, S.P. Newburgh, which is stationed right at 8487. I live on South Church Street, right in Goshen here. Grew up in Goshen on Golden Hill Ave., so I've been around Goshen my entire life. My wife and I, we recently moved back two years ago. Just, you know, couldn't get enough of Goshen when we grew up here. Had such a positive experience growing up here, so we really couldn't think of a better spot to, you know, start raising a family. My son was born September of '21, so he's a year and a couple months now, and it's amazing watching him grow up and just knowing that he's eventually gonna be going through the same, hopefully have some of the same experiences I had, because I know they were so positive. But yeah, that's a little bit about me.
We'll start with the first question. What are some of the major issues you believe our school district is facing?
I think one of the major issues is the population growth. A lot of people, I think the pandemic kind of quickened this a little bit. A lot of people are trying to find a nice suburban area to live in, and with Goshen having such a high rating as a school district, you'd be Warwick, you know, this area is very well-known for good school districts. I think Goshen has one of the top ratings. A lot of people are coming to this area, not just with kids that are in the school, but younger families too that don't even have kids yet, or maybe just had kids, just like myself. We settled down here, and that's something that I think is gonna have to be planned for, for the future. It's, there's already a lot of students that are in the district, and I think that's just gonna continue to grow as more people move to the area and start building their families, multiple kids and all that. And with that comes multiple other issues as far as, you know, the budget concerns, right? Buses, staffing, how do we provide food for the students, all that. You know, and the class sizes can't get too big for, you know, the teacher-to-student ratio. Those are, I believe, some of the major issues that Goshen is gonna see in the future and that have to be prepared for. The space in schools, I know that was big when I was in school here. There, you know, renovations have to be done to the schools just to keep them updated and all the proper equipment that the students need to succeed.
What in your experience or background would you consider to be an asset in the role of a school board member?
So my current job doesn't, you know, necessarily scream, you know, school board member, but I think some of the things that I've learned as a trooper, you know, planning, action, all that stuff is very important too as a school board member. As I was just speaking about, the future, you got not just the now, but the future is pretty important. So being able to plan for that is a very important aspect, and my job has allowed me to come up with a plan, implement the plan, and when things do go differently than you did plan, you gotta be able to kind of adjust as you're in the middle of it. So I think thinking on my feet is one of the main things I've learned. Also, just communicating with the public as well. I know this is a, you know, it's an open floor for the public. People are allowed to come, people are allowed to voice their opinions, and people want to be heard. If I was to go to a scene and shut somebody down without them voicing their opinion and making them feel like they weren't heard, then it would be a pretty bad situation for me. And I feel as if my communication skills with the public in general allow me to kind of make people go in the right direction. They want to be heard, I can hear them and get my point across as to why we're kind of gonna do it this way instead of this way.
And lastly, what do you believe is the role of a school board member?
I think the school, I think the role of a school board member primarily is to provide the school district with the proper policies and financial decisions for the superintendent to act on those. We're outside the walls. We make the policies for, outside the walls of the school, the superintendent takes and puts those into, put those into action for the benefit of the students. So we supply the tools for the superintendent to maximize the potential of the students.
And what intention do you have, if any, to run for the open seat come the spring?
My intention, you know, when I first saw it in the Chronicle, I saw the Chronicle ad that the, you know, the open seat, and I didn't think anything of it at first, and then I started to think about it. I said, you know, why not? Why not? And as I started to think about it more, once I, you know, threw in the application over the last few days, I've been thinking about it, I have a pretty high intention of running for that open spot if, you know, if all goes well over the next couple months.
Any other questions? Nice meeting you.
It's very nice meeting you guys, too. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
I'll just have you introduce yourself and then just state what your role is in the community, you know, a business owner, a parent, you know, whatever the, whatever it might be within the school's district.
Okay, I'm Judy Green. I know several of you, but not all of you. And I've lived here my whole adult life. And put two children through Goshen School District and one grandchild. Is a retired teacher from the high school. And have, obviously, I think you probably know, been on the Board of Education for a number of years. I'm active with Historic Track as a volunteer on the Board of Directors there and it's a different activity for me since I've never owned a horse in my life, but there are other reasons to be involved. Just very interested in the school district in general. And when this opportunity opened up with the unfortunate resignation of Mr. Malane, I felt if I could help, I would just throw my name in the pot.
Thank you. We'll go through the next three questions. The first one is, what are some of the major issues you believe our school district is currently facing?
It's kind of hard to pick two when you think about the whole scheme of things from K through 12. One of the things that concerns me and probably everyone sitting here is helping the children catch up from what they lost during COVID. And I think that's, I know the district has, has done things to try to help the children catch up, but I think it's something that's going to have to go on for a while. Academically and emotionally, I think there's been quite a spinoff from the whole, the whole problem. The other thing I just had in mind was having been retired from the high school, I always loved the place, loved my job, love working there. And I've just been really concerned with the revolving door and the principal's job. And I'm very, very happy to see that you've appointed Mr. Panteleon. And I think that will help a lot, but I think that constant flow of administrators in and out of that building hasn't really been too positive. So that has been a concern of mine, sitting home, thinking about it. But I think probably you'll see some improvement.
And what in your experience, kind of funny, what in your experience or background would you consider to be an asset in your role?
Alison, I can't hear you, I can hardly hear you.
Oh. What in your experience or background would you consider to be an asset in your role as a board member?
Well, I don't know. Twenty-three years. Yeah, that, that's, that's, I can't really say too much more than that. I mean, I really devoted a lot of my life to the board and spent, what, seven years as the president of the board. And it's, it was a big part of my life. So I don't know what else I can say.
And lastly, what do you believe is the role of a school board member?
Well, I don't know if all of you had to go to Albany for training, but I know I did. And the first thing they taught us is that you do not run the schools. You run, you, you oversee the running of the school legally and according to policy, but you do not involve yourselves in the day-to-day activities of running the school building. And I think that's something that's hard for some people to, to do without knowing that, that can lead to problems if you get too involved as board members. It's enough work to keep track of the policies. I was chairman of the Policy Committee for many years. And we get this constant flow of policy changes from ereboses. And you have to customize them to your, your community, your school district. But that's a constant thing, keeping up with the law and keeping up with changes in education. So that's about it.
Anyone have any questions?
Sure. All right, how you doing? What intention do you have, if any, to run for a seat on the board when there's an available seat this spring?
Oh, none. I, I, I just thought that since this was a short time slot, that it might be easier, it might help you to have someone come in who's been here and knows what's, you know, how things run. That was really the, one of the reasons I applied for it because, well, just that, I'm familiar enough that I could walk into it and be a contributing member.
Any other questions? Thank you so much. Nice seeing you again, Judy.
Goodness, that was, that was brief.
Yeah. We only had three questions for everyone. The same three questions.
Okay, thank you, folks.
Good night, Judy.
Have a good night when we turn this.
Can you hear me? Oh.
Good evening, John. If you can just take a moment to introduce yourself and let us know the role that you play in the community, whether you're a business member, a parent.
Sure. My name is John Chef, and it doesn't, it isn't spelled the way it sounds. It should be spelled C-H-E-F, but it's not. It's just an old Polish name from, I lived here most of my life, except for some time that I worked on Wall Street in the, in the sixties. But I've been here most of the time. My father was an onion farmer. I used to work with him summers while I was in college, so he could go. He worked as a meat manager, so we've been together for a long time, except he's passed now, so. I don't know where to start other than I worked for the newspaper for most of my career. I worked for 30 years for the Times-South Record. It was, I started out, I left Wall Street because I couldn't stand it anymore after about three years as an auditor and an accountant. And I stayed there 30 years and I finally became edit. As, as I said, I started as a sports writer and worked up through managing editor and editor and general manager and then publisher. And I, I left in 95 after 30. And I worked in education for five years for the New School at, at Castle Point in, in Middletown, running a master's program in health services management. And then they were winding down and then the final blow was that nine 11 happened. The New School being in Lower Manhattan really was this, their communication systems were really hurt very badly. So they pulled out of the branch campuses and I decided to go back into the newspaper business, not as a, an employee or not, but as a, a broker. I started selling newspaper companies across the country. And I probably sold over a hundred of them. Things are a lot tougher today than they were then, but and so that's sort of it. I, I graduated from Goshen High School, 1959. I was president of the Student Council my senior year. I was very involved in athletics, although I only played baseball. And that's a very short story, I hope.
Thank you. What are some of the major issues you believe our school district is facing?
I'm sorry?
What are some of the major issues that you feel our school district is currently facing?
I still didn't catch you. I could, the mic isn't.
Is it the mic that's?
I don't know.
What are some of the current issues that you feel the district is facing?
You know, I think number one is probably going to be number one for a while, and that's security with what's going on in the country today. I mean, I've been watching it as a former newsman, just blown away by what I see. And I think as, as administrators and board members, one of, one of your, one of the things is you'd like to get settled and get somewhere where you feel secure. And I don't know that that's ever going to happen. You can be as secure and work as hard as you possibly can and draw up all your plans and, but some, something will come out of the blue and then you're, you're never safe. So it's always a worry, I imagine. Every little incident, I know you've had a couple of small, smaller incidents recently. I know Middletown's had a few. And so to me, I don't know if there's a magic bullet, but sorry to use that phrase, by the way, but it's very serious. The other is I know there was a very quick transition during COVID to online teaching. Remember, I was at the New School and I took my first online course just to, just to give the administrators an idea of what I, what I thought, how difficult would it be and so forth. And, you know, it seemed to be pretty, pretty much under control. And, and so I think the school system has done a very good job in, in transitioning over. And I know it probably wasn't very easy and nothing that's worth anything is easy anyway. So, but now that we can see COVID in the rear mirror and not in the front driver's side, front, is there a plan or is, is it completed to get back to teaching in the, in an, in another way, the way that, that existed beforehand? I know things change a lot educationally, so. But I talked to students who've said to me, I don't get it, you know, I'm not, we're not being taught like we used to. And now that COVID is almost over, why is that? And I said, gee, I don't know, I only asked the question. And so there is a concern on students' part that they're, we're not going to get back to where we were, teaching, excuse me, teaching wise. So I think those are two burning, burning issues. There are probably several long range issues that I haven't even focused on at this point. I would certainly get up to speed as quickly as I could if I were to join all of you, but that's about, that's about it, Alison.
The second question, the second question you may have already touched upon, but it's asking, what is in your experience or background that you would consider to be an asset in the role of a board member?
I was on the Board of Orange Regional Hospital for 22 years. We built a new hospital, so we did a lot in 22 years, had a merger with Arden Hill and Goshen. And one of the things I found is I, I looked at your board structure and your committee structure, looked at the hospitals, and they're pretty much the same. You know, they have an audit, you have an audit committee and you have several committees that, that overlap. And I've sat on most of them in my period of time. I'm an accountant, accountant by education, so I always, they always had me sit on the audit committee. At one point, believe it or not, I was president of the New York Newspaper Publishers Association in Albany. And, you know, we used to pay dues that were extremely high and never got a heck of a lot back. So when I became president, I just asked for an audit, which being an old auditor, you know, I would do. And the board said, no, we can't afford it. And I said, well, that's the problem, we should, we can't afford it. And so it took a while, but finally convinced them and found out that the executive director was stealing money. It was just a feeling I had, having been involved in, you know, excuse me, in several, over several years. And so those experiences are helpful. And the other, the other committee, budget committee, I've been on negotiations. I've sat both sides at a bargaining table. Not a lot of people have done that, but they, there are some. And it's a wonderful experience once you get all the stress away from you. And I see, there might be a few others. I think I've kind of covered it over, over encompass, all encompassing.
Lastly, what do you believe that your role would be as a board member?
Well, board members develop policy and oversee that policy and being carried out. I think that's the major job of a board member. Sometimes one of the more boring aspects of it because you can't carry it out. And you've got other people to take care of that. So and be a cheerleader, you know? Put on a happy face as mu, as much as you can. And you know, your, your most important, the most important thing I found as a, as a chief executive officer of a company was that there's nothing more important than your employees and your organization. And to me, you can get an awful lot out of sometimes some very few people, depending on how you on how you treat them.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions?
What interest do you have, if any, to maybe run for the board in the spring when there's an open seat available?
Well, I, you know, when I read the ad, I still work as a broker, but, you know, things have slowed down in the newspaper industry. There aren't many people that want to buy a newspaper today, and for obvious reasons. Or maybe not so obvious, I'm not sure. But I would, I would run. I've never run for office before, but unless I, you know, unless it's not what I think it's going to be. I look forward to enjoyable time. I, I've worked very hard over the years to bring people together, to make Orange County and the Goshan Middletown area as strong as it can be. I was part of a group that founded the Orange County Partnership in 1976. The chambers wouldn't do it, wouldn't come together. So the Orange County Partnership, which we founded, had to do it and had to begin marketing Orange County in a positive way. It really was being done half and half. Newburgh Chamber was marketing their part of the county. Port Charity was marketing theirs, and Orange County Chamber in this area is focused on this area. So we needed a better organization to handle what was needed at the time. I know the partnership has run into some problems lately, politically oriented perhaps, I'm not sure, but nobody's been very happy lately with the structure. And so we'll see about that. But there's just a lot of things like that that I've been involved in, that I hope have made this a better place. I always, I was asked in that question, I guess in the questionnaire you sent out, worrying, and that was, why do you want to join? Why do you want to become a board member? And I'd just like to put some of my past experiences that were valuable and some of them invaluable and help another good organization become great.
Thank you. That is all the questions that we have tonight.
Sure. You have one more, you said?
Nope.
Oh, you're done. Thank you very much for your time.
Yep. Have a good evening. And that concludes our board member applicant interviews. Next on the agenda, I need a motion to enter into executive session. Shannon and Brett?
Thank you.
Be it resolved, the Board of Education will enter into executive session with the intent not to reconvene the business portion of the meeting for discussions related to the appointment of a board member and the employment history of a particular person or persons. All in favor? Opposed? Thank you.